Hello, everyone. Welcome to our Vampire the Masquerade 5th Edition All Hakata Chronicle Berlin Bloodlines. This is a special in-between-season-episode air in the mind. So let's meet our mindful vampires, starting this time, because this is a special episode, start with Rachel.
Oh, um, hi, everybody. I'm now scared. Um, hi, I'm, uh, the Azure Butterfly, Azure for short, or simply Rachel. You can find me over at the AzureButterfly.TTV. I'm also the creative director over in Rolling Nomads. And I am the mistress of ghosts, Maria Rusali.
It's been a while since you said that, huh?
Yeah.
Glad you remembered. Az.
Aw, man, here we go. Hi, I'm Az, or Az I was on the social media, because I think I'm funny. And today I will be playing the delicious, devious, delightful diablerus Adelaide Nagaraja.
I'd like Az to know that we've had a few comments of people agreeing that you are indeed funny.
Wonderful. I love that. It's spreading. I'm rolling so good.
Is it not true?
I think it's very true.
I think so too.
Hilarious. To myself.
To everyone.
Shut up, Mau Mau.
And last but not least, Avery.
Hey, what's going on, everybody? It's me, uh, at AveryDeBoy on all the social medias. I'm something of an internet personality. And, uh, this afternoon, happy timezone, whatever it is for you, I will be playing yet again, under a genetiger hair, Edgar Veit.
Edgar Veit. Exactly. As always, this is a Vampire the Masquerade 5th Edition actual play. We've gone over our safety and consent, but please check in with yourselves, as your wellbeing is important to all of us who are playing. All the content warnings will be in the description. So if you are ready, las uns unfangen. And let's return to Berlin, three nights after the Sabbat attack on the Bahari Manor. We open our scene tonight with you, Adelaide. You awake inside of your gravedigger shack in the Kunewald Forst cemetery. Two nights ago, you rescued Kasim Batama, the sheriff and interim prince of the Camarella, who was being tortured by Thin Bloods, under the direction of the Sabbat leader and Kasim's sister Sahira. Those Thin Bloods, by the by, were the ones you all brought back from Hamburg. Your eyes snap open as once again the night has fallen over Berlin. Three Rouse Checks, please.
Aw, yes, the three Rouse Checks.
It's a special session.
So I had two successes out of three.
So you are two hunger. Perfect. Now, Adelaide, you are aware that Kenneth has been missing since the Bahari party. It's unclear if he met his final death there or not. Either way, you've had your hands full, literally and figuratively, caring for Kasim. But right now, you don't see him anywhere in your bedroom here in the root cellar.
Adelaide will kinda get up. Look around. Is Ted down here?
No. You haven't risen a Ted.
Ah, excellent. Oh, yeah, I've been, I've been having to spend blood on other stuff.
You sure have.
Oh, thanks. So Adelaide's gonna take and kinda get out of bed and walk up to where the kitchen slash living room is and see if anyone else is awake.
So Bella is at the Bahari Manor at the moment. She, you didn't want her to see Kasim this way. It was quite brutal. So your intention is to leave the root cellar, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. As you attempt to go leave the root cellar, would you make me a Wits and Arinos roll?
Absolutely. With my two hunger. Four, five, six, seven.
Perfect. So with seven successes and because you possess Auspecs, as you go to leave, you see that Kasim is standing there in the corner, obfuscated. And he's attempting to reach out and grab you, in a playful way, not in a way to startle you, but he was waiting for you to wake up. As you know, he has a higher humanity than you, and he is awake an hour before you are. And as he reaches out to grab you, you may do whatever you like. You may allow him to do so and pretend that you were surprised, or any other thing you'd like to do.
Adelaide's gonna wait until the last possible second and then like turn around and wrap her arms around him from behind.
And break his obfuscate.
And then bury her nose in like his height difference, so probably like shoulder.
He's sort of a low-throated grumble. And he says, "I should have known better than to try and sneak up on you."
I caught you.
"Is it strange to say I'm going to miss watching you sleep when I do eventually return?"
You're almost healed, sorry. Guess I shouldn't be surprised to be leaving.
You notice that his fangs are extremely long and descended, and he is holding you a lot closer than he normally does. And he is trying to conceal it, trying to hide it, but he failed every single one of his Rouse Checks, and he is very hungry.
She's gonna kind of run her fingers along his jaw. Do you need to eat?
Sort of clears his throat. "I do, and I did wanna talk to you about it. I was hoping I wouldn't be this hungry, but all this healing has taken a lot out of me." I... And he, with the one hand that he does possess, he takes you back over to the bed and sits you down. Adelaide, how much do you know about my clan?
Not very much, just that you're dangerous.
Not nearly as dangerous as Ebraam, though. Was.
No.
I keep thinking perhaps I will sh-share that information with Sahira, and maybe she will die of shock. Adelaide, a long time ago, a very long time ago, my clan was subjected to a curse by the Blood witches. It has tapered off over time, but it is still ever present in our blood. Should I feed from Kindred Veit? There is a chance that I won't be able to stop myself from drinking all of it, to the very last drop.
I see.
I'm telling you this. I want to be yours, Adelaide, in every way. And I want to know if you trust me.
She's gonna take his face in her hands and kiss him. Of course I trust you, my love.
You have your seat of power now within the Hakata. I think all of our plans have fallen away. There's no reason for me to attempt to hold on to the princeton of Berlin. We could go anywhere, do anything, and I would happily do it at your side.
There was a time I would have loved nothing more than I still would. But there is much to do here. Yes. I can't keep running. All I've done is run. And with what the rest of the Hakata are doing. At least until the Shadow Bane is taken care of. And Bella is embraced. I can't leave.
I don't understand, why must you embrace her? Why?
I don't want to. To what she wants and with Lucius.
She doesn't understand, Adelaide, she couldn't possibly. You can't embrace her.
I keep trying to tell her and she just, she wants it. I, I don't, I don't want to kill my daughter, but I might have to, to save her.
Takes your face in his hands, kisses you. "We will find another way."
Yep.
And if that's the case, Adelaide, that you don't want to leave Berlin and you don't want to run, then having someone on the inside of the Camarella will be most advantageous to your new position. So I will not give up our original goal.
Thank you.
But I want to do it only if I belong to you.
What are you asking of me?
To make me yours, in every way.
Are you sure?
There are very few things in this Unlife I have been sure of, and this is one of them. From the moment I saw that you were still on this side of the final death, I wanted nothing more.
Love you.
I love you. And let me prove it. Trust me.
She's gonna bite into her own wrist and hold it out to him.
He's, sees that you've done that, and he smiles. I think, maybe you don't know the pleasure that I can give you this way. And he bites into your wrist with his fangs. And it is pleasurable, Adelaide. It is unlike when, just three nights ago, Edgar bit into you in a hunger frenzy. That was extraordinarily painful. This is nothing like that. This is, if there is anything that was the exact polar opposite of the Hakata bite, it is the bite of every other Kindred, apparently. Or maybe it's just Kasim, who knows? But you feel an immense amount of pleasure, warmth, and safety, and contentment. You close your eyes to it, you lean into it, you give into it, and you can see now yourself fading, falling away, that it could be so easy to just let Kasim take every drop, every part of you. Crit. But he's not going to. He does take a significant amount. Please make me three more Rouse Checks. He can't resist how delicious your blood is, the blood of the Nagaraja, the blood of his people. This could get dangerous.
Oh, I actually succeeded.
And all three.
Look at that.
You don't increase. You don't increase any more hunger, but he took, he took so much in order to speed up the process of bonding. And he has a two-point bond to you now. You have three blood potency, is that correct? So you can have a total of four thralls.
Yep.
Of which now you have two, as he looks at you with eyes of absolute love and devotion. And your blood has left him warm, left him with a glow, a blush of life, even if it's just temporary. He does begin giving into that moment, kissing you, pushing you down onto the bed, crawling on top of you, and that's when you get a text message.
Adelaide.
Which, of course, he ignores, yeah, which, of course, Kasim ignores.
God, Adelaide wants to ignore the message. She's gonna kind of put her hand on his shoulders and push him on his back and then reach back for the phone.
He's not really gonna resist, he only has one arm to support himself.
Yeah, I know. I'm being mean, it's fine. I just need a moment. It might be Bella.
He acquiesces, begrudgingly so.
Yeah, quickly look at the phone.
The text message is from Akua. You did text him
Mm-hmm.
that night at the Bahari Manor. You were the only one to text him.
Yes.
The text message reads, "Hello, cousin," as you are now no longer niece, but cousin. "You promised to come to Cleopatra's. You should come now. Bring Edgar." Punkt, period.
This is either very good or very bad. Did, did anything happen with Akua after he left?
That was quite a while ago. Uh, no, I, I left it entirely in, in the hands of your coterie.
We, we took care of it, or I thought we did.
Do you want me to come with you?
You're still healing.
He, I, my two legs have been fully healed, and I may only have one arm now, but a Horomastosoffet two bless me with a second.
I would much rather you stay home and heal. It shouldn't be too long.
Is that a command, my domiter?
Yes.
Very well. Is there anything you'd like me to do while I wait for you to return?
It's, no. She's gonna like, think about like, giving Bella a call. No, no, uh, just, just.
I can certainly go to the Bahari Manor and check up on Bella, as I know that look in your eye.
I would really like to know how she's doing.
I will. It's not far. I will walk, and I will call you when I get there, or text you. I don't like the phone that you, I know you got me a phone, and I know you set it up for me, and I know I haven't touched it. I'll either, I'll call, I'll call, I'll call, I don't like.
I don't really do texting anymore.
I'll, I'll call.
You could always have Bella call.
Yes, what an excellent compromise. If she's not too busy watching one of her shows.
You could always sit with her. And she is gonna grasp his hands and raise them to her lips.
Hand.
Like kiss him on both hand, and then kiss him on both cheeks. Get ready to go and send.
Now, I have to ask, are you gonna send Edgar a text? Or are you gonna do exactly what you did in episode one and just show up at where he is? Now, you know where he is, he's living in, um, a maisonette apartment in the Mitte at the moment. He's not at his penthouse.
Yeah, I'm gonna send off Kasim to go check on Bella, and then we don't, we don't call, we just show up.
Right, alright, perfect, perfect. Alright, so we're gonna move on over to Edgar. Uh, Edgar, you awake one hour before sunrise, and that hour was spent with Aelyn. Three Rouse Checks, please.
Can do. Two successes, one failure.
So you're at two hunger, perfect. Tulio also informed you that Kenneth is missing, and although you attempted to use your powers of blood sorcery to trace his whereabouts, uh, that night was chaotic, and near as you can tell, Kenneth did not meet final death, at least not inside the Manor. Uh, where he is, however, is unknown, and how you feel about that, I'll leave entirely up to you. Now, Edgar, as I've stated before, there's an unuttered, undeniable sense between you and Aelyn that your time together is fragile and possibly coming to an end. Um, it hangs in the air, you feel it like a tether between you, like you've both been here many times before, because you have. And it only urges you not to miss a single moment together. Um, so the steam of the shower follows both of you out of the bathroom. Aelyn's legs are wrapped around you, and, um, you place her down on the bed. Uh, as you cover her and kisses, and even as she responds positively to your touch, she leans into your ear with a heavy breath and says, "You cannot keep this up all night without feeding Edgar, and I won't let you kill me."
That's a fair enough point. I that I have calls I need to make to pull in debts anyway, I should, I should go and seizure, man.
Let me at least help you. I bought you some new outfits while you were sleeping.
I appreciate that.
Let me dress you, come.
He will, and I think as he looked, like as they walked past the clothes that were discarded, he was still carrying that card that, I believe, either Imogen or Maria handed over to him that, from.
From Walker?
Yeah.
Imogen gave you that card, yes.
And I think his eyes linger on it for a noticeable moment.
As your eyes linger on it, Aelyn holds up something in front of your face. It is a, um, new Burberry suit, pant and suit combination, and she says, "What do you think?"
I like it. It's just understated enough to not draw too many eyes and just refined enough to fit me.
Then put it on, I want to see a fashion show.
Girl smile and just take her chin in his forefinger and his thumb.
Just let me look at you a moment longer.
Been looking at me for three days, and it's not that I don't like having you around all the time, but I need to do things like eat and get sleep and have, I have to use the bathroom and things of that nature.
Isn't that what the D-time's for?
Sometimes I have to do those things at night, believe it or not.
I've been.
And as, as he's sort of dressing,
I've been thinking a lot about our options. I'm, I'm not content to lose you again.
I think that's perfectly clear, I don't want to you to go, I don't want to go either.
Haven't really had time to bring it up, but, uh, Imogen and Maria, they, uh, I guess they met some werewolves that are interested in me and the Shadow Bane.
Of course werewolves are real. Of course, why wouldn't they be? Next you will tell me that fairies are real.
I'm Scottish, darling. You, um, I tell you they were real even if I didn't believe it.
Oh, no. Is that what you meant when you said that Scotland has a tail?
Eh. I should have taken you to Loch Ness when I had the chance.
And a werewolf can purify the Shadow Bane, is what you're saying?
I, I don't know. I, I know precious little about them, but I'm keen to learn.
I've only seen movies, Edgar. I thought maybe werewolves and vampires, that they hate each other.
We do.
And you want to give one a call?
This feels different. This feels like there's mutual gain to be had. They said someone's got a target on Wait Enterprises, and I can't help but be reminded that your protege is in control of a company with my name on it.
Yes, I've tried the last few days to get back into the internet of Wait Enterprises to see what Ebru has done, and I just, I can't, I, she's changed everything, I have no access, nothing.
You did nothing wrong.
I, I think that that is, um, what is it, demonstrably untrue statement.
She's good at what she does. Have no bearing on you. You see the good in people, and as much as it pains me to say, I think there may be good in her yet.
As you say that, and you finish dressing in the Burberry navy-colored Burberry suit, um, Aelyn pulls out from a box that she has, the pin, uh, the, um, Medusa mask pin that she made of the piece that you had taken that night. Carla's mask. And she puts it on you. She pins it to you, and she's touching it too much, you think? It's weird, she keeps rubbing up against it, and she stopped talking and engaging in your conversation.
What do you feel when you touch it?
I I, I don't know, I, sometimes I felt like I could, I know how much she meant to you, I could feel it in the piece of glass. That's why I made this, but sometimes I felt like I could do something. I could bring her back, I could make her whole again, make her new. And Edgar, please roll me, uh, intelligence and awareness, please.
Surely can do three successes.
Yeah, the air around you, Edgar, is getting strangely stagnant and static. It's like you can taste copper on your tongue. She's manipulating the atmosphere, she's doing something, and it doesn't feel great.
Edgar will take her hands in his, move them away from the pin.
Soon as she stops touching it, it stops.
Stay here with me. Don't go, don't go to that place.
One more intelligence and awareness. You touched her.
Uh, five successes.
Even better. She, as you say that, before you can, as you say, "Stay here, stay with me, don't go to that place," she, it's a flash, and the look in her eye reminds you of when, after the Bahari ceremony, after Carla was killed, that intensity to her. And she reaches out suddenly and grabs your throat, doesn't squeeze, and obviously you don't breathe, so it doesn't harm you that way. I mean, you breathe now because you're at nine humanity, but you don't need to breathe. And she looks very intensely at you, and she says, "I could do it, you know, I could, could I breathe life into you, make you new, make you whole? I think I could, I could try to do it."
Stay here.
I'm gonna need you to do something more forceful than that.
Not that I think it'll help, but I, we are in close proximity and there is eye contact. I use compel.
Okay, make me intelligence, oh, excuse me, um, whoa, whoa, my brain. Uh, intelligence and resolve is the counter role. Charisma dominate, right?
It's either charisma or manipulation.
Uh, yeah, whichever's higher for you.
They're the same.
Of course they are. Oh, who's the lucky boy, I only rolled three successes.
I rolled four.
Perfect. What is the command that you give her?
Stop.
And she does stop. Let's go of your throat.
That place that you go to when you lose yourself. There's nothing but shadow and ruin for you there. You can me.
I'm, I'm sorry, Edgar, I don't, I don't know why, I, I don't control it, I, I don't know why.
It's because it's not yours to control. The power inside of you, inside of every version of you, belongs to someone else, and they are using you.
Can the werewolves make that stop too?
If the werewolves can eh, then Ilse Asher has a half-decent plan. She wants to take it into the, into the Shadowlands and, and throw it in the maelstrom.
I don't know what that means.
There is a great storm in the Shadowlands, or so I've heard, I'm not well versed in the hearts of oblivion.
You should ask your cousins, they seem to know a lot about dead things.
I planned on speaking to Maria about that, but I guess this storm eats up everything it touches.
Oh, Maria, right, uh, when I was. Oh, Maria, right. Uh, when I was looking through our, our bills and getting, um, trying to, um, understand your mother's, uh, uh, portfolio, all of her bank accounts. I was trying to get a handle on it all while you were sleeping. Um, Maria right now is using one of your credit cards. She's at the Ritz Carlton in Potsdamer Platz. She's spent a lot of money, like a lot, like it's like a 5,000 euro a night room. It's the top suite. I didn't put a stopper to it just in case you said use my credit card.
I didn't eh, but she has calls to celebrate. And what is mine belongs to my family. And what is my family is belongs to me.
That moment Edgar, there's a knock at the door.
Check his phone and check the camera to see if it's at the door.
It's Adelaide.
Of course it fucking is.
And Aelyn will smiles. It's Adelaide.
Like direct eye contact with the camera and she knocks again.
Remember you did bewitch her. You have an apology to make, my darling.
I think I did already. If I didn't, I, I should, you're right. Uh, but
And she throws on a robe and runs over to the door. And she greets and you see Aelyn, uh, in a silken robe, uh, her hair is all wet. Uh, but she opens, throws open the door and she greets you in Arabic and pulls you in to a hug.
Adelaide will return the gesture.
It's so nice to see you Adelaide. Welcome to our very, very small temporary apartment.
It is a pleasant view.
Hmm.
I'll let you to talk. Um, I also need to get, I don't know. Um, am I staying here Edgar or am I coming with you? Or something I shouldn't be around?
Get dressed. You're coming with me.
Okay, I'll need a few minutes to dry my hair.
Take your time.
She leaves.
To what do I owe the unexpected pleasure?
I heard from Akua finally.
Hmm.
You said that you wanted to go to Cleopatra's the next time I went.
I need to speak with German anyway. And we're going, if we're going to Cleopatra's, we're gonna swing by the Ritz Carlton and pick up, uh, Maria. And more than likely Catherine.
Why?
Because she stole my credit card and she's using a room there. And Maria also has an obligation to go and see Akua. We should all make good on our promises, shouldn't we?
I always do.
I think you perceive some sort of slight in my words that wasn't there.
You read too much into my words.
It's because you talk so little.
I don't like to hear the sound of my own voice like some people. I do like your apartment. It's much more cozy. The space is more defensible.
Sure.
Adelaide, could you roll me a wits and insight?
Absolutely.
Please add your dots in either Auspex or Occult to that role, whichever's higher for you.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm gonna say Auspex would probably be a better role, but I will allow Occult.
Wits and insight?
So wits and insight in either your dots in Auspex or your dots in Occult, whichever is higher for you.
Occult is higher.
Okay. I'm gonna phrase it more in Auspex way, but I will let you use Occult.
And then one, two, three, four, five. Oh dear. Okay. Nope. That's not messy. That's, that's important. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine.
That's an immense amount of successes. So here's what you can sort of glean from the scene that we're in here. One Edgar seems maybe morose is the wrong word, but he seems to be weighted down quite heavily with something mentally or emotionally. And you feel it not just from Edgar, you feel it in the air around you. The whole apartment seems to be permeated with something very heavy, um, something that you can't quite put your finger on. And on top of that, the smell in the apartment is quite strange. Uh, the air smells like it's, um, ionized. You smell like copper in the air, like something, like an electrical fire had just happened, but obviously it hasn't. Something has just occurred or something is occurring currently here in this apartment. Fortunately, I can't give you details of it. Um, but that's what you would glean just from your abilities of Auspex and the occult.
Is everything alright?
Do you really care?
I would not ask if I did not.
I don't believe you. That's alright. I'll answer your question anyway. No.
Is it you or Aelyn or both?
There's nothing you can do about this, so why don't you mind your business?
Okay.
How is Kasim?
Good.
Good.
You heard from Kenneth?
I've been looking for him, but I have ne.
He's not answering Penelope's messages, upsetting her.
I'm more than worried.
Steely silence passes between you before Aelyn finally emerges. She's wearing a very similar outfit to what she wore to the, um, Bahari Manor, the night the Sabat attack three. It looks like she replaced the dress that got ruined when Penelope fed off of her. And unfortunately, none of you have been back to the Bahari Manor. Uh, Edgar, you have, but no one was telling, asking you about Penelope. You were there to look for Kenneth. Uh, so none of you are aware that Penelope is not at the Bahari Manor and is currently on the loose somewhere in the city of Berlin. But that's neither here nor there. Uh, Aelyn has put her hair up and dried her hair and she's wearing a white dress. Uh, so good for hanging out with vampires. And she goes, um, where are we going?
Am I dressed inappropriately? It's getting really warm outside, so I thought.
We're going to pick up Maria first.
And then we're going to Cleopatra's to see our uncle Akua cousin, Akua cousin.
Must be a very complicated family tree. And Aelyn comes very close to you Edgar and whispers in your ear and she says, you cannot be unkind to your family. I won't allow it.
Edgar will kiss her on the cheek and just whisper back in her ear. It's not meant to be unkind. It's the truth and I'm not sure where I stand with them.
She switches very quickly to Farsi as she leans away from you.
But the surefirest way you will get to making sure that nobody likes you is to be unkind. Treat your family like you would treat mine. Then she looks at you Adelaide, I'm ready to go on your.
You want to take my car or yours?
I'm already slumming it. We might as well take yours.
Edgar, I don't know if you know what slumming it means, if you think this is slumming it. It's just small.
That's what I mean.
We'll get the big place. House, maybe.
Maybe.
She takes your hand.
Let's go.
So you abscond from the Mette. Move over to not very far from the Mette, just a little bit north of the Mette. Move over to Maria. Maria.
Hi.
You awake inside of your luxury suite at the Ritz Carlton in Potsdamer Platz with Katrin. All on Edgar's dime or euro, however you'd like to put it. Three rouse checks, please.
Fucking Maria waking up expecting to see fucking Edgar standing.
Been here for three nights because Katrin doesn't want to leave.
Uh, three rouse checks, you said?
We've racked up 5,000 euros in bills.
Okay, I wonder if my, if my luck is gonna be.
Oh, that's no fun. I'm hoping it'll be bad.
Only one of those is a success.
So you're at three hunger. So you wake up to starving decay, which is always fun. You wake up and your, uh, form is very corpse-like. You look like you're severely dehydrated. Your lips have curled back so that you can feel your fangs pressed against every part of your flesh. Maria, you are also aware that Kenneth is missing as the rest of your coterie is, but honestly, on the list of problems, Kenneth has never been close to the top of yours. Um, he was a fuck up in life. Chances are he's gonna be one in unlife. And if he's not final dead, he'll prob- he's probably doing something stupid right now and will turn up eventually, or he won't.
He probably just tried to bail again.
Yeah, exactly. So you're looking straightforward as you wake up, um, and you see Katrin, she's out on the balcony of this luxury suite. And right now she's topless. Uh, drinking straight from an open bottle of champagne out on the balcony. And it offers an exceptional view of the center of Berlin from several stories up.
I think even given the, uh, starving decay form for the moment, um, Maria's gonna take, just take in the scene for, uh, for, for a second, letting it absorb, um. God, after everything we've been through for the past while, a couple of days of like nothing, but this is so much better and it's kind of reminding her a little bit of how things used to be a little bit.
Exactly.
Um, but then she's gonna like, she's getting out of bed, turn around, turn, turn over and on the nightstand, see the ring. And remember that things can never be the same again.
Do you put on the Pope's ring?
Oh yeah. Oh yeah. Oh yeah. There's gonna be another second of just like well, she
Maria, are you dressed or not?
No.
Okay. Uh, do you want to get dressed before heading out onto the balcony? Or do you want to be like Katrin and be very free spirited? And she, she's wearing bottoms, but she's topless.
Um, considering how much money we already spent, um, I'm gonna have bought one of those bougie sheer like, uh, oh crap, what's the word? It's my ADHD right there. Um, just, just the
Bathrobe?
No, like, like loungewear robe.
Okay, sure.
Very, very sultry and stuff like, yeah, 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 yeah. Um, it's
So you, so you're, so you're letting me know that not only have you spent money on stuff within the hotel, you've also used Edgar's credit card to go shopping is what you're letting me know.
A little bit, yeah. We're, we're, you know what? At this point with how much money we've already spent, it's a, it's, it's one of those ask for better, better to just ask for forgiveness after the fact and figure it out.
So as you enter out onto the balcony, Katrin turns around, she's drinking, as I said, champagne out of a bottle. And she says to you, Maria, you look very, very hungry.
Always.
Uh, let me call, let me call someone for you. And she reaches over here on the balcony. There is a phone. There's several phones around this luxury apartment. And she calls up someone to deliver food. Food as in, uh, she orders a sandwich or a blake, she orders something and then she hangs up. It'll be a few minutes.
I love you.
I love you too. And she turns around to face the balcony and she sort of dangles the champagne bottle over the edge of the balcony. And she says, what will it be like? I wonder when it's my turn. Will it be like to kill? Is it, does it feel personal? Does it? Does it get easier?
I don't think it ever gets easier. But you do what you have to to survive at times. You can pick and choose. You, I, to be perfectly fucking honest, I don't know what your, what your palate's gonna be like when you get, when, uh, when you change. That's gonna be one thing to look forward to is figuring out what you like. And you kind of just go from there.
She's still looking out over the balcony dangling the champagne bottle. I wonder if I should get used to it.
Did you wanna try now?
If I maybe start a little bit less personal. She drops the champagne bottle from several stories up. Will it hit someone? Will they die? Will it hurt them? Or will it miss entirely?
A flip of the coin or a roll of the dice. He's, Maria's going to, uh, peer over and see what she can make out.
Yeah, it's too far. You can't see that far. Several, several stories high up. You don't even hear it smash. The street noises are too loud.
You know, that's, could be a metaphor for that. Sometimes you don't know the consequences of what you do until it happens already.
It's hard though, isn't it? You're, when the food comes, you're going to bite into him. It's going to hurt him. He's going to scream. He's going to be loud. It's going to be messy. Right? So you have to kill him.
Then you want this. You told me that you wanted, that you want this. And be sure.
I maybe just killed someone by dropping a bottle on them from several stories up in the air. If you think it killing, I'm just practicing.
Then why don't you practice a little closer? And she's going to pull out one of her knives. Or go back in and grab one of the knives. Um, and she's going to let it rest on the, uh, the railing of the balcony near them.
I mean, I can do it. But it'll make a mess.
Gonna be a mess anyways.
But don't you have a masquerade to protect? Or do, does the Hikata not care about that?
They do. They do. But you know your knives. Hell, I've seen you throw, throw knives very precisely. You know where to hit.
But in the human body, blood is going to come out of whatever hole I make, wherever I make it.
Just don't pull it out. Let me drink. But if you want to test it out, if you want to feel what it's going to be like. Then why not do it in what is, what is the, what is the phrase? Uh, proactive action.
Sure. She heads to behind the door of the apartment or the hotel room. And she says, hide, you look like a monster.
This is gonna make it easier for me in all honesty. I don't think they would, uh, like seeing this. And she's gonna, um, find her, find a best hiding spot. What's the layout?
Bathroom, probably the bathroom. Just go to the bathroom. And you sort of leave the door open slightly so you can see in to what Catherine is doing. And as the person knocks on the door who's delivering it, um, lucky we're in Germany where you won't find a robot delivering your food. Not here yet, maybe in 20 years. Jesus Christ. Um, we're a little behind in the technology here in Germany. Um, you watch Katrin open the door and pull it so that she's behind the door. The person enters in with a trolley and they sort of look around and they say, um, hallo or you know, guten abend. And Katrin without missing a step, uh, soon as they cross the threshold, she pushes the door closed with her body and she stabs him right in the neck.
Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Maria slowly push the door open and she's kind of just leaning against the door frame for a second there. And she's gonna say, what a lovely morning for breakfast. "What a lovely morning for breakfast." And she's just,
Probably evening for breakfast, I guess.
Or evening, yeah. Morning, evening, same thing, right? And she's just going to, um, all starving decay, wearing that, wearing that sheer, uh, lounge robe, and she's just gonna glide on over, um, with the knife still in his neck, and she's just gonna grab him by the hair, look at Catherine while she's doing this. And then almost, this is what to expect, and he's going to sink her fa- and she's going to sink her fangs into the other side of his neck.
Are you gonna sink, because he'll start screaming and yelling, uh, because of the painful bite. So you can pull the knife out and start drinking right from the wound that Catherine made, which I assumed was the point of this.
That's better. That being said, I could, that being said, I could also literally just stuff my hand in his mouth so he can't scream.
You could, you could, but there's a hole already open, essentially.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Yeah, we'll do that. Uh, uh, because I was debating, I was also debating on like making a point for like what Catherine has to expect, with that sort of thing, but yeah.
This is like a free spigot, right? So you pull the knife out and let the blood just pour into your mouth? Are you going to take his life? I assume that you are.
Yeah, this is the, this is the lesson.
Yep. So you're gonna give yourself two stains for that?
Mm-hmm.
As you drain him of every single last drop. Yes. So as this is happening, as you're feeding, and I said, "Take two stains," this man is going to die, and blood is going to get placed, it's not going to be a blood bath, but blood is going to get on this pristine white carpet. Um, Edgar, you have produced, um, identification that you are the owner of the credit card sitting down at the desk, um, and so you have been given a card to Maria's room, and you are now approaching it. And you, and Aelyn is with you, and you can hear the kerfuffle happening in there, and you can smell blood. You are a predator.
And just Edgar will look over. Do I still have to be kind if my reputation is at stake?
Okay, be nice to Adelaide. I really like her. I like Maria too, but Adelaide is sweet. I don't know why you are so harsh with her.
Because she means to abandon us.
I, I don't know what you mean.
We'll talk about it later.
Okay.
And Edgar will scan the key and walk into this.
And the scene that you see is Maria recently fed, mouth covered in blood, um, this man laying dead on the floor, a trolley of food next to him, and, um, he was stabbed with a knife. With Maria's knife. That seems odd. Maria could just bite him, but, and Katrin is behind the door.
Uh, Edgar, hey, I knew you'd be, uh, arriving sooner or later.
Do you allow?
This is fucking funny.
Do you allow Aelyn to see this scene?
No, he'll just kind of turn. Would you mind waiting out here?
No, of course.
He'll shut the door. Do you think this is fucking funny?
No, but I think after everything that we've been through for the past,
This place is tied to my fucking name. I don't care what you do. In fact, I would have loved to just hand that card over to you and celebrate with you. Maria's, Now this place is tied to my name.
If you want to be mad at someone, Eddie, be mad at me. I stole it.
I don't, I don't care who stole it. You've, I'm tired of being angry. Whatever. I'll deal with it. I'll clean it up like I always do. We need to go see Akua.
Definitely sounds like the head of a bloodline to me, Maria. Definitely.
Um, Maria does do this, uh, by the way.
You may remove all your hunger, by the way.
Oh, it's already gone. Um, Maria does do this, by the way, which Edgar, you would know as Maria's kind of like, it's like a, it's like a nervous twitch, but one that she, she does a lot when she needs to talk about something.
Katrin, for your edification, Edgar, is topless, and she has blood splatter on her breasts. Uh, that would indicate to you one of two things. Either she was the one who did the stabbing, or she was extraordinarily close to this person when he was stabbed by Maria.
Maria's cleaning up while this is happening and, uh, getting dressed.
Whatever. And Edgar will just turn around and walk out, shut the door, wait in the hallway.
That wasn't very fun.
With Edgar? With, that was Catherine, right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, um.
I mean, I think, I think it's going to be easier than we thought for me to get Tegan to embrace me and take over the bloodline. He doesn't even want it. He's so defeated.
I don't think defeated's the right word, uh, Catherine, and I, he's right outside, he's not that far hearing.
I don't care if he hears me.
You're, sweetheart, as much as I love you, you're going to if he does.
No, I don't think so. Did I ever tell you the story that when we were younger, he was supposed to marry me?
A few times, yes. That's would have been, I would, I was gonna say surprising, but no, that wouldn't be the right word to use, would it?
Well, we're supposed to make babies for the family, and both of us decided we didn't want to, and we stood together against it, to his mother, to my father, and said, "No." So I'm not afraid of him.
The question you should be asking yourself is the same question that you, or the same revelations that you brought to me the, uh, those few days ago. Are you sure he's the same person?
Maria, I, I know, we had this conversation already. That woman, whatever she is, has changed him entirely. Therefore, he shouldn't be in charge of leading the family in any sort of capacity. He's dangerous to us. Look at him.
Maria's not looking at Catherine, nor the door. He's looking at nothing, if I'm being perfectly real. Uh, she's doing that thing where you, your eyes are shifting, you're, you're more in your brain in that moment. Um, and after she's put it, finished putting on her jacket, uh, thinking about that, she's kind of fiddling with the ring. That's on her, uh, yeah, the, the Pope's ring. And, um, yeah, uh, that'll be my decision to make. I need to.
That girl is dangerous to him, dangerous to the family. You should do what the Pope would do.
We'll see. First, we must make sure, uh, we must see what, what we must do with, uh, with Edgar.
Do you want me to come with you, or do you want me to stay here and clean up?
I think this is gonna be good for you to learn how to clean up after your kills.
Fine, but I'm not giving him back his credit card.
And promise it's not gonna, it's not gonna continue to work, but I'll, I'll talk to him, and she's gonna,
I have my own ways of making sure that, uh, things work.
Um, Maria's just gonna stride on over to, uh, Catherine, and she's gonna place a, a hand on her cheek and pull her into, uh, this, and say,
Bloody kiss. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Does she pull away?
No, no.
Um, and she's going to, uh, say, "I love you. If you do run into any trouble with this, let me know. I'll do what I can."
I'll let you know. Edgar can kick rocks.
Maybe.
As you're having that conversation, as you leave the hotel room, Aelyn sees you, and she says, "Edgar, what happened? You look upset."
It's because I am.
What happened?
They murdered someone in that room.
Soon as you say that, Aelyn is going to attempt to get into the room. Give me the cards.
It's not. It's done. Please.
Give me the cards.
I can't do this right now, Aelyn.
I'm not asking you to do anything. Give me the cards.
If you go in there, someone is going to die.
What do you mean? You said someone was murdered.
And you're going to go in there, and you're going to try and do something, and someone is going to save something, and then I will do something I will regret.
Then stay out here. And she does not take the card from you. She goes over to the mechanism of the door, puts her hand on it. One, two, three, four, five, six, and she breaks it.
Perfect.
The electronic device.
That's what we needed, sure.
And she opens the door, and you, as you're having this tender embrace with Katrin, you see Aelyn appear at the door.
There's an oh fuck me look on her, on her, on, uh, Maria's eyes as she darts to Eddie, and it's almost like a why did you let her in look.
Edgar looks fucking feral.
She bends down to the person on the floor. And she grabs onto you, Maria. Grabs on, she's on her knees, she grabs onto around your ankles. Katrin is immediately infuriated that she's touching you, and Katrin moves to remove her hand from you. Let's see who's faster. Eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 successes. Maria, what hunger were you at when you awoke?
Uh, one.
When you awoke, you were at three hunger, is that correct? You were at starving decay.
Yeah, starving decay.
You watch Aelyn breathe into this man. She's on the floor, she's getting blood on her dress, and she's breathing into his mouth, and she's touching you, and you feel the blood from your body pass out of you through her hand and pass into him where she has him by the throat, and she's breathing into his mouth. Restore yourself to three hunger. And this man begins to twitch and move, and he returns to life. And he immediately starts screaming, if anyone would like to do anything, because Katrin is going, after she sees that display, she's gonna stab him again.
Edgar is going to raise his hand and conjure a palm of flame.
Okay, you can make me a rouse check.
I'm,
Maria, what would you like to do?
I will not get hunger.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that is still fire.
It is.
In front of me, and I'm now in starving decay. Do I have to roll anything not to freak the fuck out?
I just need to know your intention before the flame comes up.
Um, my intention was to, uh, wa- wa- uh, was to pretty much stomp on the neck of the man, or like,
All right. So Edgar, what is your intention with the fireball? Aelyn is there as well.
He's gonna look at Katrin and say, "Don't you fucking move."
Maria, roll me a friend check. That is your unspent willpower plus two dice for your humanity. You still have that stain as well. And no, you still have that stain, and you're at three hunger.
One, two, three, four, um.
That's plenty. You're not going to freak out, you're not going to run off, you're not gonna try and jump off the balcony or anything of that nature, but you do back up slightly as you see Edgar produce flame in his hand. Katrin also seems confused that he's able to do that. And she says, "What the fuck? He's fucking screaming, Edgar." She brought him back to life. I thought she was not kindred like us, like you.
You know what I'm, you know what I'm, you know what I have to do? And she's gonna say that as she moves around the ring.
And Edgar will step forward and grab this man by the jaw, look him in the eye, and with compel, he'll just say, "Sleep."
It's not really the way compel works, so you only need a roll for this. I'm gonna need a manipulation and dominate roll. I need you to get me at least three successes. Yes, so with that many successes, you can compel him to sleep, and he does fall asleep.
Edgar will dismiss the palm of flame.
Katrin's still holding the knife, points it at Aelyn. What the fuck is she?
What the fuck was that?
If both of you live long enough, you'll find out.
Don't fucking threaten us, Edgar.
I'm not threatening you, Katrin.
That sounded like a threat.
You're talking, you're talking to the Pope.
Yes, the Pope. Forgive me.
And now I have to fucking eat again, because look, I can't go out like this anymore.
Maria, not too long ago, you told me something that changed me. You said, "Just because we are monsters doesn't mean we have to act like it."
There's more going on in this situation than meets the eye, Eddie. We can talk in the car.
You're killed. Look, it's your papacy to, as you wish. I'm tired of trying to lead those who don't want to be led.
I never, I never asked you to lead me. That's your own volition, Eddie.
So does.
If you're tired of lea- of leading Edgar, why don't you just, I don't know, give up the Dancern bloodline head to Tegan?
Because it's mine by right.
I don't know, Tegan's older than you. She's been Dancern longer than you.
And I am the blood of Olivia. The seat belongs to me.
She's the blood of Ozric, and Ozric is the blood of Olivia, or Olivia was his blood.
And if Tegan wishes to challenge me for the seat, she's more than able.
Good.
But while I sit on the seat, any embraces into the Dancern line will be approved by me.
Can we talk about this another time? I'm sure you came here on different business.
I already told you, we were, I'm here to get you to go see Akua.
Yes, and that's why I'm saying we should probably just figure this shit out and go handle that. And not, and talk about this later.
Well, I have nothing left to clean up, so am I going or not?
No.
That's funny, you telling me no. You're not my domiter, and you're not my husband.
How many times do I have to stand behind and beside you for you to realize I'm not your enemy?
When you start acting like yourself again.
This is who I've always been.
Maria's had enough in this moment. The person who's compelled to sleep, are they gonna stay asleep if I, if I, if I give them a little nick and then drink a little bit of their blood?
No, they will wake up.
They'll wake up? All right.
The painful bite, yes.
No, no, with like, no, with a nick, with a knife.
Oh, no.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna stay, like, they're asleep, I'm not gonna kill them.
So you're just gonna take one?
Yeah, I'm just gonna take one.
But you're down to two?
When we get, when we get to Cleopatra's, Germaine has a stock.
We need to talk. Catherine, I'll, I'll, I'll message you when I'm done, and Maria's already out the door. He's,
The credit card, Maria.
Not with me.
I want it back.
Oh, you'll get it back, Edgar, when you and I have a conversation. Alone.
Sure. When we're done at Cleopatra's, I'll come for you.
Toodles.
Bye, bitch. Edgar will hold his hand out to Aelyn.
She's looking at her dress. I don't, I should not wear whites. Why do I always buy clothes in whites? I don't, I should not wear whites. Why do I always buy clothes in whites?
Because it's your color.
I'll have to stop and get something on the way, something else.
And is, uh, is there any sort of fire escape that we can take instead of the main exit?
No, this is a luxury, this is the penthouse, this is all the way at the top, there is no fire escape here. Um, you can take the back stairs as opposed to the elevator, that'll be quite a few steps down.
Yeah. Take him and Edgar's going to carry this sleeping person with him.
We have that conversation now or in the car? Which do you prefer?
Uh, Maria's gonna have the conversation in the car where it's at least a little more private than.
So as you get to towards the bottom of the stairs, you see that there's an employee break room here. Do you dump the body there?
Um, um, my understanding is that Germaine has a, a more than passable ability in dominate, yes?
Germaine and Akua both do, yeah.
They can memory wipe?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're taking him with us.
Okay.
I'll drop him off back here after we're done.
So what is the seating arrangement? Is Aelyn sitting in back with the sleeping man while you and Maria sit in the front?
Sleeping man's in the trunk.
Aelyn is gonna say, please Edgar, I'll, I'll sit in back with him, please don't put him in the trunk. That, what if he wakes up? That'd be horrible, claustrophobic. He just died and I brought him back to life. Did you see? I brought him back to life.
Aelyn.
What?
You didn't stay with me, you went to that place.
But I saved his life.
You did, at what cost?
No cost.
That we know of.
I feel fine. It's not like before. I have the necklace.
I don't think you're the one who's going to have to pay the cost. Maria. Maybe you can lend my dear wife some insight.
If he remembers anything. Anything that happened, anything at all, anything about us, that's a masquerade breach and we can be cleansed.
I could take it from him. I could give him a new identity. And she's looking that way again Edgar, I could give him a new life.
No, Akua and Germaine will handle it.
I could make him so happy.
Aelyn, enough.
Rearranging that one, someone's, rearranging someone's life is as good as killing them.
And making something new. What I meant, Maria. Do you know what happens to a spirit forcefully pulled back across the veil?
It's difficult to say, um, because of how time works, uh, there where they go in the Shadowlands, um. Most of the time it's a disorientation. Could be as little as nothing or they could completely forget who they were as a person. It's still it's messy is what it is. It's always messy.
I was just trying to help.
I know.
And Aelyn falls quiet.
What did you want to talk about, Maria?
First of all. Sorry about the card, she didn't wanna stay at the, um.
I'll just wave a hand.
Whatever you need from me, consider it a, consider it a boon that I owe you.
No. I won't. Christ, Maria. You're like a sister to me. I've known you longer than any of the others. We've been through so much together. You've left a life behind and become who you are. And I've been fortunate enough to be by your side through it. You don't need to owe me things. I'm worried about you. You're slipping. I meant what I said in that room.
I also meant what I said and that you didn't know the context of what was happening in that room.
So explain it to me. Actually, no, no. I can't ask that of you.
It's what I was going to do anyways, Eddie. Just listen, please, for a second. You remember, I've been trying for so long to embrace Catherine. And she finally relented. After everything that happened, she finally relented on that subject and it's a little deeper and as she says that, she, you, you, you will, you would notice, it's, it's not, it's not a it's, it's, it's a new tick, but it's one that's like plainly obvious. She's like swirling the ring around her finger. I worry that if she doesn't understand what she is becoming, what she will be capable of more than she already knows. Things will get worse. And her intentions with this aren't. I just need to need time with her. Eddie, I need time to, I need time to make this right. I need time to, I need time to make sure that she's not just gonna become.
I'm not sure she's going to give you time. She's going to force my hand. And I can appear weak to the other heads of the bloodline. Do you understand what I'm saying to you?
Yes, I fucking understand what you, because I can't either. Given my new position.
Now you can, which is why I will not breathe a word of that indiscretion in a room tied to me, to anyone else. That's your nice secret. That's the kind of shit that gets you killed and someone else wearing that ring, Maria. You can me.
Yeah.
And as much as it pains me to say. I would destroy all of them. For you. Not even for you, I'd do it for me.
What do you want, Eddie, with all of this? With your position, with everything?
I don't have time to plan for that.
Too many questions, too many thoughts, too many. We have, we have, we have, we have, we have a mission to do, right? What's going on with Akua? Tell me.
We told him we would come and visit.
Is he alright?
Didn't he? Don't care. He talked to Ozric at the Bahari mansion. And conveniently slipped out before the attack. So I don't fucking care if he's okay. I care if Germaine and his sister are alright.
Edgar, I need to ask, are you gonna stop anywhere for Aelyn to change or is she going to arrive in Cleopatra's with a bloodstained dress?
Oh, we'll stop somewhere for her to change.
Alright. Um, she'll pop in somewhere, change, she will pick out a black dress, not a white dress. Um, and return to, and get changed quickly in the car. As you drive, and you have to drive into Friedrichshain, which you know is, uh, Anarch slash Sabbat territory. Um, Sahira's haunting ground, stomping ground. So as I've described Cleopatra's before. Um, it is a place, sort of like Egyptian tourist trap, has a lot of, um, idolatry on the outside of it. It is a spielhalle or a um, gambling den as well as a hookah bar in between, also has a regular bar in there. And as you pull in, as you arrive, all the lights are off. It is not currently open. You can see that there are, are small lights in the back that are on and you can see people moving about in it, three people. But it is not open for business.
Would you, would you mind letting our cousin and our niece and nephew know we're here?
Sure. And she's gonna, uh, adjust herself a little bit, make sure the ring is on properly and step out into the night and walk up to the door and knock, 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 knock.
Who opens the door is Luisa. She has a black asp curled around her arm. And she says, mm, hello Maria.
Hello, how are you doing this evening?
Good. Papa said, called Adelaide and Edgar, didn't call you.
Edgar's here with me, I just wanted to make our presence known. Are you ready for us?
You can come in as we are still here.
What a beautiful snake, by the way. And she's gonna motion to the car.
Thank you, I call her Aelyn.
I love it. I love that quite a bit.
Edgar will scoop the unconscious, uh, delivery driver.
Oh, yeah, we have company too, by the way. Um, we're gonna need assistance with a memory wipe.
Bring him inside?
He'll motion for Aelyn to follow him.
Sure.
We'll go in.
As you walk in, Maria first and you following, Luisa gives you a hard stare. And her asp sort of drops fang and hisses at you, but doesn't move to strike you.
How are you this evening, my darling?
I've had better nights.
Sure you have.
Yeah, yeah, I think we all have.
Luisa leads you in and it's quite dim in here. You see there's lots of boxes. They seem to be packing up some things.
Going somewhere.
Germaine enters up from the basement and he says, uh, hel- hello, Eddie, you want your last payment from me, I assume? Well, you don't know, Papa hasn't talked to you yet, but you want your last payment.
Actually, I need you to, uh, sort out this issue and he'll lay that dude down on top of a few boxes.
You want me to kill him?
No, he needs a memory wipe.
Who is he to you?
Absolutely fucking no one.
Then why you want his memory wiped? I could just put him in a jar for payment.
I have plans for him.
Alright. You want your payment or not? Does this, I do this for you, that's three last liters.
You're leaving.
We are.
Take it with you. The payment, consider it a parting gift between family.
He takes the man and starts dragging him down the stairs. He doesn't lift him up. Nakua from the top of the second story here that looks down over the first story and he says, hello, niece and cousin.
Uncle Akua, it's so lovely to see you.
Come, enjoy, enjoy, uh, join me for one last hookah. I got the text from Adelaide, I know that she has prior engagement. Something came up, but, uh, come, join me for one last hookah.
Maria's not gonna hesitate, she's gonna walk up.
Edgar will follow with Aelyn.
Soon as Akua sees Aelyn, he gets very, very uncomfortable. He's suddenly not as jovial and relaxed as he was just a moment ago. But he tries to hide it and he sort of adjusts himself, sits a little, a little bit more properly. And he does nod at her and he says, welcome to Cleopatra's, wife of Edgar. And Aelyn just politely nods, a little confused.
Did the air just get a little tenser around here? The vibe feels a little off.
Um. And he sort of thinks for a moment and then doesn't say anything but looks in a different direction and you watch Germaine pop his head back up from the basement and look at his sire or technically, these two childer are not his, um, childer. He did not make them, they're not his sire. Sort of more complicated relationship there, but they are all Samdi. And he nods at him and he comes over to Aelyn, Germaine, and he says, um, could I possibly show you, um, some of the, uh, we have so much liquor that we need to dispose of, would you please, uh?
No.
She stays with me.
She'll be within your view, you can see her from there. Um, Papa would just like to speak with you alone.
My business?
Look to Akua, is that right?
It is. You are just stubborn, I should have remembered that.
I'll look to Aelyn and I'm not.
Germaine very politely and very, um, respectfully holds his hand out and, uh, leads her down the stairs over to the bar that's still here, the little minibar. And he begins making drinks for her. He's going to deal with the man later. He'd rather keep her occupied. And Akua then looks a little bit more relaxed and he sucks down on the hookah and offers you the other two, uh, pipes here. Come, come on Edgar, please. Do it for, do it for your formerly uncle, now cousin Akua. Thank you, Maria.
Yeah, Eddie, come on, join in and just in a look of like towards Edgar, where only Edgar can really see her eye, it's kind of like one of those play along.
Edgar will hold the hose in his hand, but not interested.
You look extremely dour Edgar, would you like me to clean your aura?
I'd like you to know for a man with such foresight. Why you serendipitously made your exit mere tens of minutes before the Sabbat struck at the Bahari Manor and warned no one.
I had no foresight of the Sabbat attack on the Bahari Manor.
Make me believe you Akua, I'm begging you.
He holds his arms out wide. Have you possessed your auspex or possessed you, uh, uh, an inclination to such a thing? Read me, look at me.
Activate sense the unseen.
You don't see anything with sense the unseen.
My powers of auspex aren't that great. I, you know, I've always envied your ability, cousin.
Well, I could share with you what I did see, but, uh, I'd like to talk about it before I, uh, give you such a fright as I received.
Why did you leave?
I just said uh, what I did see. And, uh, it was when I saw your wife Edgar.
Then I know what you've seen.
Okay. I highly doubt that, but sure.
Show me.
Let's slow it down. A moment. Tell me what happened at the Sabbat, uh, the Bahari Manor, the Sabbat, what happened?
It came and tried to burn the place down.
For Ozric, that seems odd.
Hmm.
It's taken.
No, they weren't there for Ozric. Whoever took Ozric just made use of a clever just made use of a clever opportunity. Sahira deliberately laid an ambush for Adelaide.
Ah, I see. Because of her bow.
Or something of the like.
Yes, well, I wanted to give you this and Akua lays down the deed to Cleopatra's and hence slides it over to you. This is for you.
You appreciate that?
Well, technically you bought it.
I did, but you didn't have to return it.
I'm sure you'll find a better use for it. And uh Maria, I see you're sporting a very familiar ring. Is it just uh taken from Ozric as a trophy or did you, are you the pope now?
The latter, uncle.
Ah, so I see that is why you have brought Maria with you. Are you here to judge me?
Only to see.
I don't have the right to judge you, Akua.
Well, no, I wanted you here so I could give you Cleopatra's back, give your deed back and warn you. Adelaide's too, but to a lesser degree, she promised to come, so I thought I would just, what is it, kill two kill two foxes with one bush or whatever the phrase is.
I think it's kill two birds with one stone and.
That doesn't sound right.
A fox in the hand, two in the tree, some shit.
When I was at the party with everyone, the execution, when you arrived with your wife, I received an overwhelming vision like I had not received since I was laid out on the battlefield of the Napoleonic Wars. Such devastation, such catastrophe. Do you have any idea what and who she is, Edgar?
I do, and I know what and who I am as well.
I, okay. Maria, you might have to translate for him. Edgar is acting very strangely tonight.
Little bit. It's been a rough night for uh for us all.
Please continue.
What I saw of her, well, certainly her light gleams, it shines, it calls to us, sings to us. You could see it in the face and the eyes of everyone at the Bahari Manor. Why you brought her, I'll never understand. But more than that, what I saw beyond it, there's a darkness in her, Edgar, darker than any of us, all of us combined, darker than anything I have ever seen.
You saw darkness? I always saw.
It is light that allows us to see shadow. And her light is so bright, you almost cannot see it. But deep at her center, at her core, is darkness. It's small now. But what I saw, it will expand.
Well, Maria knows that she doesn't have the same kind of skill that Akua does. She still does have sense the unseen turned on and she would like to once again moment, like go over towards Aylan. I just see the light.
I have only ever seen uh your wife through you, Edgar, when you have, she was missing or when there was a problem and I saw through you my abilities and uh didn't see anything like this, but seeing her in person is quite something different. And well, it's enough to make me reconsider making Berlin our permanent home because I don't know what of Berlin will remain in the coming days.
And that's why you're leaving?
It is. And you may call me a coward, if you will, it will not hurt my feelings. I have said before, I am not a lover, I am not a fighter. And I do not know how many of us will survive what is going to happen.
Fair judgment.
But I did want to give you some sort of warning, especially you Edgar, and I guess now since you're the pope, Maria. Perhaps an axe, swift axe to her neck is the correct solution, I don't know. But I'm sure that will make at least one of you unhappy.
I am reserving my judgment on this matter until I learn more about what is going on.
Do tell us, Edgar, what you think is going on, because you say you know what she is and you know what you are, whatever that means. You tell me what you have kept from everyone in the family of the nuclear weapon that you're keeping in your apartment and your bed.
You're leaving the city, Akua. I don't owe you any answers.
Is that really the way you want to leave our relationship, Edgar, after all this time? Thought I was doing you a favor, giving you back the business, telling you what I have seen in your wife, warning all of you if you choose to leave or not, giving you ample opportunity to do so. I have never been anything but kind and helpful, generous to you, Edgar. But if that is really the way that you feel about Akua, then you may pack up your things and leave at this moment and take your nuclear weapon with you.
Up until this moment, I have returned everything you have given me with love.
Don't know. I do remember a time that you lied to me, bold faced, and now I'm thinking perhaps that you have kept things from me that you maybe should have told the person in the family who has the best foresight into the future.
You know how tricky these things can be, Akua.
I know how you are. Olivia too, kept many secrets from all of us. They compounded with interest. Sure that is language that you can understand.
And now in the case of Amish milliner and the rest of the defectors, do you, perhaps there was something to her withholding secrets?
I'm not sure what point you're trying to make, Edgar.
But I'm not sure I can trust you.
Yes, you see where that got her, didn't you? A shotgun blast to the face. You're telling me that you have been with your coterie so long. Maria, you have known since both of you were humans. Me, you ha- I have been around since the 19th century. You've known me as long. I do not play the game, Edgar. What pi- piece of power have I ever grasped for?
It's not you that I'm worried about, Akua.
Then don't lie and say that you can't trust me. Maria, you're going to have to be very tough on some of these kids if you're going to be the pope. They are very set in their ways. Ozric was just very quick to let them do whatever they wanted until they did a really big fuck up and then he would just chop their head off. You need to be persistent and keep on their ass.
She is the singer of light and I am the heir to the crown of shadows.
I don't know what that, any of those words mean. I know what they mean individually, Edgar, but I don't know what it means when you put them in a sentence in that order.
What do you mean crown of shadows? Eddie? Is there something I don't know?
To be very clear, the singer of light can destroy or purify the shadow bane. The heir to the crown of shadows is the one who can use it to rule from the shadow lands.
Okay.
I have a piece of Capidocius. More than a piece, I have his memories, I I have lived lives with her a hundred times. We always find each other.
He looks at you, Maria. Is this information that you are privy to?
I'm learning most of this now for the first time, same as you, uncle. He's gonna take a drag.
I only just one, two nights ago put the final pieces together and truly knew for certain. So I haven't said anything.
Okay, but you know that she could do magic, right? You've known, you've been together for, I've heard about her for what, a decade now, if not more?
I've always known, yes.
Okay, do you know what type of magic she can do?
I know it's bad.
Do you know it's anything, right? Do you know it's force of will?
I know it's not blood magic.
No.
It doesn't follow any formula. Follows her desire and her desire alone.
He reaches out and he touches you, taps you on the chest. It's her will. She wills it so and then it is done. You're telling me you've never seen her do anything that you could maybe call a miracle?
I've got myself fucking one earlier.
I've seen a hundred.
Do tell, Maria.
Judge, Maria's taking a, taking a quick second to judge the situation before she says that man whose memory we're looking to alter killed. Do with that knowledge what you will.
You're saying she brought him back to life?
Yes.
What did it cost her?
What did it cost, what did it cost? We don't know yet. But she's, she's fine.
She drained the fucking blood from me that I took from him.
So it costs you something, but it costs you something that you had already taken. It didn't cost you anything that you didn't already have or didn't start off with.
Not that, not that I know of, but she's just gonna like start looking over herself.
There was a time when it ate at our life force and then I came into the possession of a relic and now she can do as she pleases.
You don't think that it's exceptionally dangerous to the city of Berlin?
What do you want my answer to be, Akua?
The truth.
The, oh, nah, the truth.
I don't believe I have ever asked you of anything other than the truth, Edgar. You what, who have been kindred since the 90s? I don't think I've ever asked you for anything else. I love the 90s, it was a good year.
I wonder, they certainly were. The truth is, Akua. There's no price I wouldn't pay to destroy the shadow bane. I don't care what the cost is.
If it's her, her life is the cost. You would pay it.
It's her choice.
No, 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 no. I am asking the question, if the cost is her life, will you pay it?
I am looking into alternatives so that we never reach that.
Okay, let's try one more time. If the cost is her life, will you pay it? Final time I will ask.
I don't know.
A yes or a no question.
I don't know.
Okay, so then the answer is no. You won't, because if you say you'll pay anything to end the shadow bane and the cost is her life, you would say yes. Because if I said to you, will you, your own life, your own non-life, would you pay it? What is your answer?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So the answer is no, you won't pay with, pay the cost with her life, correct? And as we used to say, silence is an acquiescence. This is why I must leave Berlin. This is why I will take my childer and we will go. Because he is not going to let anyone hurt her and if she has the power, she won't let anyone hurt her either. She may seem sweet and innocent now. But that won't last.
Eddie, if this affects Berlin, this affects the family. And you know what I have to do if it does.
And you know what I will do.
Well, let Uncle Nakua show you what he saw. He holds, he holds out his hands.
Maria will take it.
Alright, so from both of you, I need either wits and occult and add your dots and awareness. That's, that's what I need, wits and awareness and add your dots and occult. Or your dots and auspex, whichever is higher.
Seven with a crit.
Perfect.
Eight with a crit.
Perfect. Alright, so here is what you all see. You all, a vision falls over your eyes as Akua grabs onto your hands and his eyes turn into those little white pinpricks, his face turns completely corpse-like and skeletal as he shows you what he saw that night at the Bahari Manor. You see an image of Aylan. She is on her knees, holding on to the shadow bane. And she is singing light into it, she's breathing that pure golden light into the shadow bane and she's purifying it. It is turning from this uh face of, this twisted face of fear and angst and rage into something purely white and at peace. However, as soon as the relic turns completely white, you see a change come over Aylan. She no longer has this sort of sweet exterior. She changes to a much more hardened, more determined, more furrowed brow and you just see power radiating from her. And seven and a half successes for Edgar. She's not Aylan anymore. Aylan's gone. Who is behind those eyes is Behesh. And Maria, you can tell that whoever, that whether it's Aylan or not, is not acting like Aylan anymore. And the vision flashes forward of a Berlin at perfect peace. Um, people, she walks through the streets barefoot and people fall to their knees and they worship her. You watch vampires being burned out of their homes uh wholesale as she walks by. You watch werewolves attempting to attack her and she touches them with hands of pure silvery light and they fall to their knees, fall to the ground writhing in pain. And you watch the the image flash forward and her face is on billboards, people are printing pamphlets of her, people are worshiping her, she is being deified, treated as a god and there seems to never be a single moment of night. It is daylight always in this new Berlin. And the vision ends. So you see, ah, I think it is better if we all get the fuck out of Berlin or we have her here, nothing has happened yet. We can uh take care of it right now.
Maria is admittedly, after seeing that, you see her hand going inside her jacket, you know it's there, Eddie. He's not pulling yet, but there's contemplation in her.
Edgar, I would allow you a seven and a half successes for you to, to realize that neither Maria nor Akua would be aware of who Behesh is or that Aylan would be superseded by Behesh.
You can try it if you want. She'll kill all of you and there's nothing that I can do about it. I won't stop her.
Well, what is the solution then, Edgar? Or is this what you want? Is this new future what you want?
It's not what I want, Akua.
Because I don't know if you could see it, but uh whoever she is behind the eyes, she's not your wife anymore.
No, she's not.
So we trade one, we trade one bad outcome for another?
No. There is not a piece of Aylan but them. That is what happens after it's purified.
That's what I mean. We either deal with the shadow bane or we deal with her.
Then who is it, Edgar? Why don't you walk us through it? Because Uncle Nakua, or I'm sorry, Cousin Nakua, he just sees this and he says, well, I guess that means we can't stay in Berlin because I can't live in a place where it's only daytime and I have to worship someone.
Maybe a bit of religion would do you good, Akua.
Oh, I've had it. I've had it when the white men came and colonized my islands. I've had enough.
Whoa.
I'd take you, yeah, you hop on that plane of yours and go to Haiti in some time and see how good the white man's religion did for us.
I didn't, alright. The story goes that when Cappadocius first tried to wield the Shadow Bane in a tiny village in Iran, it claims, well, in our terms now, it will claim the blood of any Hakata when it's used. If someone tries to use the Shadow Bane, it will murder us all. And I, I saw Cappadocius wield it and slay his childer. Pulled the souls from their body, the blood from their veins. Not just them, the children of Seth as well. Humans slaughtered them.
Also bad?
All but a simple peasant woman drawing water from the well. And she sang to it. And she forced him to flee with her light. And she sang to it more, she nearly had it purified. And Cappadocius turned her. And her name was Behesh. And the soul that is inside of Aelyn's body is tied inexorably unless we find another way to destroy it. To Behesh, as long as the Shadow Bane exists, so does Behesh's power. And if Behesh's power is used to destroy or purify the Shadow Bane, then Behesh takes control of Aelyn's body.
He looks at you very seriously.
He's coming out.
And he says, "Ah, but she's, but she's connected to you too. You share a soul."
A piece, yes.
So her soul, your soul are connected to this Behesh.
And there is a third piece that is connected.
Yes, because you're miss, well, she's very dangerous, Edgar, because she's invaded your, not Aelyn, but Behesh, she's invaded your body, she's like a parasite on you, I see it. I've never really looked for it, so I never really noticed, I just thought maybe you, maybe it was a Scottish thing, I don't know. But your soul is not right, it's a parasite on you. If this was to come to an end, the Shadow Bane, I think you would also be free of this feelings you have for your wife.
No.
Well, you can say no, but I think this parasitic soul thing would die off. Or, or it would all be re-combined back into Aelyn.
Yes. However, there is a secondary hitch in the problem.
It's, it's missing, you don't have it, the parasite is cut off.
My former incarnation was diabolized by Lucius Giovanni.
Ah, what does the kid say, whoopsie doopsie?
So, now, with that stunning illumination you've given me, cousin, if the Shadow Bane is destroyed and severed, Lucius will die.
No, just that parasitic part of it, so I don't think it will die. I think it will combine together back into Aelyn and Behesh will be reborn, let's call it reborn. Because I don't know where she is now, but she's not alive.
She's in the Shadowlands, petrified, I've seen her.
Yes, okay, that makes sense, she did something to make this happen because she wants to be the one to destroy the Shadow Bane, but obviously she couldn't do it because she's one of us now. So she did something, something bad, because these will workers are bad. They are bad for everyone. Could you imagine having one person in control of everything and whatever they want to make happen, they make happen, that's bad.
History has proven that so many times again.
Yes, megalomaniacs, they all are. So, if the Shadow Bane gets purified, then what, Behesh will re-combobulate inside of your wife and you will lose part of whatever makes you love her and Lucius will lose the part that he stole, and then what is your plan? If the Shadow Bane gets purified by someone else, will this happen, is the question, I suppose?
Can it be purified by someone else is also-
I don't know!
It cannot be purified by anyone else, but it can be destroyed.
What, can't you find another will worker? Or are they very, very rare? Is that why we don't have cities bowing to deities left, right and center?
They are very rare, yes. But only the singer of light, a singer of light. I doubt there's more than a few at any given time.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but even, even killing Aelyn or whatever wouldn't even stop this in truth.
Oh, that is a good point, Maria, see, this is all new for your Uncle Akua. Her soul would just go to someone else, wouldn't it?
It would just be a time, it would just be a ticking clock.
What about destroying Behesh? Have you did, Maria, do you have a way to go into the Shadowlands? I know that is your, sort of your thing.
I'm working on it, not yet, but I'm working on it.
What about that, Edgar? What if you, you said she's petrified, what if you took some sledgehammers into the Shadowlands and went to town?
I don't know, Akua.
Even Ilse's suggestion is only, is only a temporary solution, given all this.
I'm not sure it is.
Throwing it into the maelstrom, I mean, who's going to go into the maelstrom together? I mean, yes, maybe a poor Edgar and Aelyn would be trapped forever in a cyclical romance, but maybe that's not the worst thing in the world, better than-
There are worst fates, but-
Better than Aelyn's new Berlin.
What I'm getting at is, do we know for a fact that nobody could pull something back out of the maelstrom? This is, this is also something we have to be okay with and then potentially leave plans for, for something contingencies in case something like this pops back up again in the future, which, if it still exists, it could and probably will.
I see why now you have been made the pope, you got the brains.
If I could blush right now, I would.
Oh, you can, but you know, it might make you hungry.
I'd rather not right now.
I don't have any answers.
Well, don't you think you should maybe find some? Now, if you say to me, you say Cousin Akua, "I do not want you to leave Berlin, I want you to stay here, I want you to help me figure this out, because I do not want my wife to turn into a monster, more of a monster than she has the potential of being in this very moment", then I will stay, I would do that for you, Eddie. But if you say, "No, I do not care, whatever happens, I will let her do whatever she wants, whenever she wants to do it", ah, then I have to go, I have to take care of my own childer, and that's, that's just the way that it is.
I would be bereft if you left, Akua.
Well, that's very sweet, Edgar, but that is not what I said. I think maybe you need to put on your, you need to get a little bit out of the sad puppy house and you need to put on your listening ears and make decisions for the betterment of the family. You are ahead of a bloodline now.
If you ask Akua to stay, Eddie, this is looking for a third option. This is looking to save you and your wife and your love.
For a lot of boons, like a lot of boons from you, Mr. Wait, I could head back into and speak with the Baron, and I don't mean the Baron of Berlin, I think you know who I mean.
Could you take me with you?
Don't know, hmm, maybe, if you get him the cigars that he really likes. And condoms, I don't know if he uses them, but he's a big fan, if you bring them, the big ones.
Ripped for his or her pleasure.
Yeah, jumbo, jumbo maxi size.
Will you stay, Akua?
If you make me a promise that right now, you will do everything you can to prevent my vision from coming true. And I will make you a deal in turn, I will do everything I can to make sure that you don't lose your wife to this Behesh.
I can make that deal, right?
Good, then give me back my deed.
Never left the table, cousin.
Sorry, Pope.
Edgar is my family, and you know what I mean when I say that, Uncle Akua, just like you are. And in turn, that makes Aelyn my family. If you, if you do, do, do this, help us, you will also, ah, I will also owe you, Boon, the Pope.
Well, I can't refuse that. It's going to take me six nights of veneration to even be allowed to go into the Baron's pocket dimension. So, I'll call you when he says, "Come in."
I'll do as much research as I can.
Try not to lose your mind in there, he thinks it's really funny when people can't find their way out, and he might keep you for a while.
Sounds amusing.
There are two other things that I wanted to ask you about, Akua. What do you know about werewolves?
I know quite a bit, you'll have to be more specific. I, the Somdi and some of the werewolves back in France, we had a little arrangements, it's not important.
They've reached out, they're looking for the Shadow Bane as well.
Oh, well, there's, why wouldn't you bring, oh, it's so difficult talking with you, Edgar, why wouldn't you bring that up?
I-
Alright, that was, ah, technically me.
Edgar does this, he needs to break this habit and quick.
I have a number for them, I just, I, I need to know what I'm walking into.
Oh, um, you're walking into, maybe until I take you to see the Baron in his pocket dimension, you're walking into maybe the most dangerous situation you've ever been in so far.
What, what powers might they have to deal with it?
Well, back in Paris, during, during the time of terror, what was, ah, there was an alley that they frequented, right? And there was a problem in the alley where so much blood and corruption was flowing through the city. We really liked it, we thought it was pretty good, but they weren't big fans of what was going on. And I watched them get together and sing in the alley in their little wolf forms, and they cleansed it of corruption, and suddenly there was no more heads rolling around in that alleyway.
Can you see where my godson is, Akua? He's been missing for three days.
He's probably on a bender or some shit, he'll be back.
I mean, I've expended a lot, but maybe I'll try. On the verge, I gotta go, I gotta, I gotta start the process, I gotta go get the good, I gotta get a gentleman's jack, that's, you know, start pouring that out for him, it's a whole thing I gotta do.
If you can afford it, I understand.
A gentleman's jack is expensive here in Europe, you know that, like that American stuff.
Not the liquor, I mean the looking.
One, two, three, four, um, eight, yeah, he's fine, um. He sort of closes his eyes and when he opens them again, again, he looks very corpse-like. He's wandering the streets, he's, ah, he's almost back to the Mitter, Atulio's apartment.
Hey, I knew he'd be back.
He seems fine.
Alright. I'll procure your cigars.
Get the, get the, the really, ah, get one of, um, the clippers, but get one made of gold, gold-laced. Pretend that you're buying everything for someone who loves the finer things.
Very difficult for me to wrap my head around.
I thought it might be, Edgar, I thought it might be.
Be honest with me.
I always am.
How much of a problem is Luisa going to make for Aelyn?
I can only keep her in check for so long, but you, ah, she really was infatuated with you, Edgar, and you decide, and you know, you, before you met this woman, you used to be a little bit of a playboy, I hope you realize that.
I hear you remember.
Bit of an understatement, he says with a little bit of a wink.
But now you are domesticated, it looks like.
Like a dog.
Like a very sad dog with big sad puppy eyes.
There are worse things than to be a kept man.
I, I wouldn't know. Not really for me.
The old iron dog.
Not a lover, not a fighter, just a man who enjoys what he enjoys.
We should go. I have to speak with Catherine.
There's probably some more you should know.
Tell me in the garden.
Please, collect your wife. I am going to be on edge around her until we deal with the Shadow Bane, it's not personal.
No, you should be. We all should be. I would be.
Thank you for your help with this.
Of course, but aren't you, Edgar? I mean, don't take this offense, but I can see what you were just doing with her the last three nights, if I look, I don't have to look too deeply to see it. That doesn't frighten you, ah, like getting a, like a snake about to crawl into a trap. Pardon the vulgar analogy.
No. I have no fear of her.
Love, I will never understand, I know Maria, you're in love, I'll never understand it.
I'm in love and I barely understand it, it's okay, Akua.
They have a name for what I am now, they call it Aero- Aeroace, aeromantics, something like that. They have a name for what I am now. They call it Aero- Aero- Aeroace, aeromantics, something like that.
The, the Eurythmics?
Maybe. Luisa told me. I just can't remember because she talks so much. He says, having talked so much.
Have a good rest of your night, cousin.
I guess I will now that I'll be staying here in Berlin. I will come back and haunt you if you don't keep your promise Edgar.
Oh, I think we all will.
That's if there's anything left to haunt Akua.
Oh, you're funny tonight.
Maria will stand and offer a hug to Akua.
Oh yeah, him, he's a big hugger. He hugs you and sort of lifts you up a little bit, and then he holds his arms out to, "Come on Edgar, for old times' sake. It's been a while."
You will. And then as they're leaving, he'll press his forehead to both Luisa and Germaine.
Well, Germaine has taken care of the man. He, the man is just sitting there sort of in a daze, and he's sitting there because Luisa has been entertaining Aelyn. And Luisa has been showing her the asp, and Aelyn seems to have no fear of it. And you just, and you just hear Aelyn say, "And can you explain to me again why you named her after me?" And Luisa just, every time she asks that question, she just giggles.
It's time to go.
Thank you. And Aelyn stands up.
It's good to see you, Luisa.
We'll see.
I love you.
And she took slogs over at the asp and starts speaking to it in French. Starts walking away.
And Edgar will say to Aelyn in Farsi, "That's why."
I think maybe you should just apologize to her. Oh, find her someone else to be infatuated with.
Oh, trust me, I've tried.
I mean, I can't blame her, not really, but it's probably not very good for her, or for you, or for, maybe not for me.
No, she does this thing with her mouth, just devoid of oblivion. It's terrifying.
Yes, she showed, yes, she showed me. Multiple times.
What do you want to do with him?
What do you want me to do with him?
That's not what I asked.
We just, he's no memory. We just let him go. Back home. Check if he's okay.
Do you feel like we owe him anything beyond this?
No. I gave him his life. What more could I possibly ask from him?
Edgar will open up his wallet and pull out 200 euros and put it in his pocket. We'll drop him back at his car at the hotel and that'll be that.
I'm sorry if I'm, no, I'm not sorry Edgar, I'm not. I can't be sorry for saving a man's life. I won't.
I'm not asking you to be. I'm happy you did. It's just a dark place that you go to, and it frightens me.
How can it be dark? I gave him life. I could give you life. I know that I could.
It's what you would have. It's what I would have to pay. I love you. But I don't think you understand. You don't pay the price for what you do. Everyone around you does.
Maria's just like, you, you know you're in mixed company with this language, right? With this language barrier, right? It's kind of, kind of fucking rude, and we were just talking about that.
I wasn't aware you were keen on listening. I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm here.
Edgar, I need you to make me a Dex Athletics really, really quickly. This is so bad. It's gonna get really bad, guys. I'm so sorry. Two, four, six, eight, ten.
Can I add fleetness?
Yes.
Five successes.
Ten successes. You're not quick enough. You watch Aelyn reach out for Maria's neck, grab her by the throat, and her other hand sort of hits her a little bit too hard on the forehead, on your forehead, Maria. And please give yourself a dot in linguistics and the ability to speak Farsi.
Man, if only Duolingo was that good.
Get the Aelyn lingo. And with that, five successes, you would see that, again Edgar, she's not doing this on purpose. She's not in control of this. She did not mean to do it. She did not realize that she was doing. It is a force beyond her own control with that necklace on.
What the fuck was that?
And what, wait, Maria speaks in Farsi.
You understand what I'm saying now. Do you remem- You remember when we watched the extended cut of the two towers and the hobbits drank from the antwell?
Ye- ye- yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, Aelyn's hand is the antwell.
She can just-
Smack a language into you, yes.
Aelyn looks, looks horrified. She has her hands over her mouth.
Maria's reaching into a pocket, pulling out a cigarette. She's not gonna light it, but she's putting it in her mouth.
We should go. We should go.
Maria, I'm sorry. Did I hurt you when I hit you?
It's alright. Consider that, consider, consider this even for what happened earlier. I've just, I need to think. I need to think. And she's gonna walk outside.
Edgar will call after Maria and Farsi and say, "This is the language that the Hesh spoke. You should know it."
She'll give a nod as she's walking away, but she's not stopping right now. She needs to get outside.
Aelyn clings to you. She's freaked out. Edgar, I'm sorry. I, I didn't, it wasn't like before. I didn't mean to do that to her.
I know.
Make it stop, please make it stop.
Edgar reached for the necklace.
She won't stop you.
I'll take it off of her.
She sort of breathes a deep sigh. And she sort of stumbles a little bit. She suddenly feels very weak. But not in any sort of, uh, terminal illness.
I'm gonna have to hold on to this for a while.
Okay. Okay.
In fact, I need to speak with Kasim. I need to know where he got this. I need to know everything. This... It's no coincidence that you are drawing the strings of fate to you.
I don't want to. I don't want to. I'm so sorry. I don't want, I just wanted to stop. Make it all stop, please.
I don't want you to. We'll find a way. We'll find a way. Let's go. Let's get you home. So, let's get you home.
Gonna take Maria back to the hotel. Where Katrin is.
I am done. Yes, and I need to speak with Catherine.
Um, on the way, Maria is, like, it's gonna be quiet for the most part, because like, Maria's now just like looking out the window chewing on a cigarette, like relentlessly thinking about what just happened. Um, but the closer we get to the hotel, she's gonna snap and just say, or snap out of it and just say, um, Edgar, before we get there, I know you're gonna wanna speak to Catherine. Um, I still have words for her as well, but those can come another time. But the you remember I told you she wants to be ta, she wants to be, and she wants to become one of us, but she wants to become Cern.
I heard. The door's not that thick.
Been told her. Yeah.
Have your words with her, and then I will make her.
She's not going to let you.
She doesn't have, she doesn't have a choice.
Edgar, if you do this to her, it would be the same as me doing something to Aelyn.
No.
Do that.
No, it wouldn't. It's not the same.
Excuse you.
Let me explain, please.
No, let me explain to you something Edgar. Katrin is my fucking partner. And if she doesn't want you to turn her, don't fucking turn her. Let me fucking talk to her. Do you hear me?
She will, she will not be made done Cern unless it's by me.
And let me have my own words from, from her. Talk to her what you will, listen to what she has to fucking say, but if I hear, if I see, if, if she gets fucking turned against her will, it's over between us. And yeah, Maria's gonna be quiet for the rest of the, rest of the drive after that, unless Eddie says anything to that.
All of you would notice that Aelyn is sort of nodding off in the car. Taking that necklace off has zapped not just her power or additional power, but her vitality, and she seems to be getting very tired.
When we pull up, Edgar will just not even looking over to Maria. Just say, "Would you mind sitting in the car with Aelyn while I get this gentleman back to his vehicle?"
Yeah.
He'll take the guy back to his car. Pull the keys out of his pocket and just hit the pop.
You walk him back. He's still in a daze. You don't certain entirely what Germaine did to him. But you find his car pretty easily. It's a old beat-up Pontiac.
Roll the window down. And then sit him, open the door. Sit him in the seat. Close the door. And then reach in and buckle his seatbelt. Put the key in, start the car. And then wait a moment, make sure he doesn't stir. And then just kind of reach in and grab him on the shoulder and shake him. Oi, oi lad, wake up, wake up.
Whoa.
Whoa, hey.
Whoa, how'd I get in this car? Holy shit.
Uh, you fell asleep at the wheel lad.
I, no, I, I was on, I was on shift. I swear to God, I was on shift.
Yeah, you're lucky, you're damn lucky you were in park, Laddie.
I, no, I started my shift at 7:00 PM. No, no, I, I'm on shift.
Check the time. And Edgar will point to the like radio, "Check the time lad, you, you passed out."
Oh man, I must have fallen asleep on my lunch break.
Yeah.
God, I've dreamed all that. Oh, what the fuck did I eat?
You alright lad?
I'm, yeah, I'm fine. I'm, I'm fine.
Alright.
I had the weirdest fucking dream though, and he sort of rubs at his neck.
You'll have those. Take care of yourself kid.
Yeah, I gotta get back in there. I still have four more hours on my shift.
Well. Here's to not being so knackered on the other side, eh?
Whatever that means. I gotta go. Thanks. Uh, bye.
And Edgar, as he pulls away, he'll note the license plate. And he'll pull out his phone and put it in his notes and put his phone away. And then he'll go back to the car.
When you're done speaking with Catherine, send her down. I don't, I don't wanna leave Aelyn in the car while she sleeps.
I got you. Maria will just get out of the car then, and just start walking, uh, heading back up.
Edgar will lean out the window. Just say, "Maria, it will never be over between us. Hate me if you must, but I hope we never get to that."
Just remember what I said. He'll turn and start wa, uh, back around and start walking.
You head up to the top floor from the elevator, and you have the card. You enter in, and Katrin has cleaned up in the sense where she didn't have to clean up any blood because Aelyn, you notice now, removed it all from the carpet as well. Everything that was taken from him, she put back into him. And she, uh, but Katrin has picked up the room pretty much, and she's just lounging on the bed watching Love Island.
How's the episode going?
Uh, it's more fun to watch this with Bella.
I'd imagine. Hope to see if we can get you guys to hang out sometime soon.
I mean, she's only fun when we're watching Love Island. Other than that, she just is boring. She used to be more fun when she was doing drugs.
Anything eventful while I was out?
Yeah, I had to order more room service because everything in the trolley was covered in blood and also tasted cold.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Um, hey. As a heads up, Eddie did hear everything that you said. I know you said you didn't care, but I wanted to give you a forewarning. Eddie knows.
Ooh, Eddie knows.
Please take this seriously, just for a second. If this goes, if, because this could go pretty bad. He wants to talk to you, and I know you wanted to talk to him. He's waiting for you downstairs in the car. If he does anything, I will kill him.
Well, now I almost want to provoke him.
Don't make me. If you love me, don't make me.
Oh, you know I hate when people say that. I hate it when people say, "You'll do this if you love me." I hate that. You know I hate that. It's manipulation, and I do not stand for it, Maria. Been together for 20 years. You know better than that.
And you know how important it is to me that I say that. Just know what you're doing, please.
Sure.
And he's just-
I'm not talking to him, you can send him up here and you can go down and watch his girl. I'm not talking to him with his ass.
Maria will just quickly shoot a text to Eddie. Basically saying just the same thing. She doesn't wanna come down when, when Aelyn's there. Do you wanna swap places? I'll watch Aelyn.
She's sleeping, but alright.
Alright. Terms are met.
So let's go.
Katrin's wearing a gold blouse, like a gold satin blouse, and jeans. Head down to the elevator. Aelyn is, has sort of gotten very comfortable laying on you Edgar. She has her hand, her hand, her head in your lap. But you can lay her down gently as you get out. Maria, do you sit in the car? Do you just lean against the car?
I'm gonna lean against the car, but make sure like, you know, I can see Aelyn, and if Aelyn wakes up, she can see me.
Where do you go with Katrin?
I mean, look around the parking lot. I mean, is there anybody?
Not really. It's like two in the morning.
Say to me what you have to say to me, Katrin Melaner.
I know for whatever reason, everyone thinks that you're such hot shit, Edgar. But I see you. I've known you all my life. I remember everything that you've ever said to me. The good things and the bad things. And when I say this to you, I mean it. I know that you don't care about your family, not anymore. You care about that girl in the car, and that's it. And if she said to you, "I feel threatened. I feel like your family wants to hurt me, wants to kill me, and they do," you would lay out the groundwork to kill them all for her. Tell me I'm wrong. And I'll drop this whole thing.
You're not wrong, but you don't understand either. If we don't find a way to do what has to be done, we're all dead anyway. And I do mean all of us, Catherine. Those of us who have been turned, and those of us who are still breathing. All of us, whole cloth, will be gone.
Well, obviously she's a magician. I used to hear my father talk about them, when he was in his occult phase, when I was a little girl. Why don't you cut out her tongue? Get a melon baller to her eyes? Chop off her hands?
Would you do that to Maria?
Well, the difference is, is that Maria can't do whatever she wants, whenever she wants to do it.
And now Aelyn can't either.
Well, did you chop off her hands? I'd like to see.
No, I did something far worse, I forced her to de-accessorize.
That's, I, it's a stupid joke, if it is a joke, and if you're just lying to me, that's-
Her power was amplified by your relic.
Why would you give it to her in the first place?
She was dying.
Problem solved.
Not problem solved. She died-
I disagree.
And an ancient magician with more power than you could ever imagine comes, makes itself a deity and destroys everything.
If she dies.
If she dies.
I don't think that's true, I don't believe you.
Ask Maria.
If she dies. I don't think that's true. And then you can, you can roll me a manipulation and subterfuge if you like, because that is not the truth. Katrin will roll a wit's inside.
Steal failure.
Uh-huh, so here's what's gonna happen, because I rolled seven successes for Katrin, I rolled a crit and then one on every dice. Um, so, you are lying. And you're trying to, and Katrin is not so easily to manipulate, maybe she never was easy to manipulate, but you think there was a time that she was, and you do remember a time when you two were young together, and you were chosen. A deal was struck between Hamish and Olivia for you two to get together and make children. You both came together, stood together against it. Um, you went on to be embraced, Katrin didn't, Katrin decided she wanted to remain a ghoul, she showed no interest in the embrace, and you sort of drifted apart after that. And you are family, you are blood related by mortal blood. But in this moment, Katrin has really come into her own, and she has no right and no claim to be this way without being of the blood, and the beast within you is getting tired of her fucking, of the cut of her jib. She's getting tired of her fucking gumption, and you are going to bite right into Katrin. I will allow, how far away do you think you are from Maria?
Not far, I mean, we're standing right by the car.
Okay, so, uh, Maria, you will see this, as you bite into Katrin's deck and she begins screaming.
Maria's eyes go wide and, um, what I'm about to do is a warning, I want that to be known, I'm about to do a warning shot. Just like Alexander, just like what happened with Alexander down, uh, down in the crypts, I'm gonna fucking pull out a knife, and I'm gonna duck it right at Edgar.
Alright, make that, uh, composure and melee. Edgar, you may remove one hunger.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five successes on a crit.
Yep, so you're gonna strike Edgar, you want it to be just a warning strike though, right?
Yeah, I wanted to be a warning shot-
For if you wanted it to be a worldings, warning strike, I would need a cult shot, ten successes, however, you rolled five successes, that's half, so you are going to graze Edgar, you're not going to harm him in any way, but you're gonna cut his jack, his suit jacket, the brand new suit jacket Aelyn made him. It's gonna cut through, however, that is not going to stop what's happening here. Unless Edgar rolls me willpower.
So, we're gonna see.
I need only two successes.
I have exactly two successes.
Perfect. So yes, that is enough to startle you, to stop you.
Edgar will push away, I... I, I'm, I'm so sorry, I, I-
Edgar, leave now.
Aelyn, who of course heard this, comes running out of the car, over to you. Edgar.
Edgar will look up to Catherine.
I will give you what you want.
And what is it that you think that I want? Son of a bitch.
If you want the blood, I'll give it to you.
Oh, no, no. You will grant Tegan.
I will not, I'm sorry, Catherine, I can't.
What do you want? A boon? Sorry, Tegan's blood is better than yours.
There's nothing that you could give me that would make me grant that request.
I guess I'm just gonna have to get rid of you then.
Do you remember when we before we told Olivia and Hamish to get fucked? You remember that, that passage? That you read to me from Marcus Aurelius? Sinne, sine misione inimicus. There is no mercy for my enemies. I don't want to be your enemy, Catherine, but this is my decision.
As you say, Herr Dancen. Son von Olivia.
Please reconsider.
Reconsider what? That you are showing me now, more clearer than ever, that you are the son of Olivia Dancen? I think not.
Do you think I wanted that? Do you think I wanted to be her child?
No. And I think that when I say that I want to be someone else's, and you say no, then you are no different. But you say, "No, I must be yours." Yeah, ich sehe ich, Olivia.
I won't bond you the way she did to me.
Oh ja, das kann ich glauben, I can believe that coming from you.
You have my word.
It means nothing, Edgar. What would it mean to me? You have bitten me.
I didn't mean to.
Ja, and you didn't mean to bond, I understand. Let go of the control. Or are you saying that you can't trust Tegan?
I'm saying there are ways these things need to be done.
And they can only be done under you?
That's not what I said. What, Maria?
I offer you this. Consider Catherine's request. And I won't tell Ilse what I learned today.
Tell Ilse.
Fast-
Consider my request, and I won't burn you unalive in your bed, how about that?
Try it.
Oh, I think I could.
Catherine, you're I'm trying to do what I can.
You're not trying. Give me one good reason why you would not concede to Tegan being my sire, give me one good reason. I can't be a Melina. It is my brother who wants the head of the bloodline for the Melinas, and you have only Tegan and no one else.
I have to make a child of my own.
But I can't trust you, Edgar.
And I can't trust you.
Yeah, so what? We make a mutual agreement of untruss between the two of us.
And we learn how to move forward.
I would like it to be known that there is actually a very, like, dire look in Maria's eyes, and it's not just the anger anymore, because she's also listening to everything Catherine's saying, and she has to take all that into consideration as the Pope.
Look, I...
Don't sit here and lie and say that you would want me to be the child, your first child for your new lineage. You're just doing it because for whatever reason you're preventing from me asking Tegan, or preventing from Tegan from possibly saying yes. And that's shitty. Herr Olivia.
No. Do you want to know why I want this for you? I'll tell you, plain, plain as the night. I want the person who turns you to really know you. And I know you, Catherine. And you know me. That's the difference. You want to know what the real difference, I can say I won't bond you, none of that. You've made it very clear that none of that matters to you. So let me speak to you in a language you understand. You know me. And there may be some confusion in recent developments. And I understand that, I'm confused as well. But I'm not confused about the future of this family. And I didn't know a thing about Olivia, I didn't know that she murdered my father. I didn't know that she murdered Isabella's namesake. But you know me. And I know you. And we cannot trust each other right now, but we have eternity to figure it out. And I'm willing to spend eternity in that relationship with you.
Katrin looks to Maria, and then looks back at you. I want to be bonded to Maria even after the embrace, is that going to be a problem for you?
No.
And if you ever try to bond me?
I would rather lay out for the sun.
I want you to swear to Maria, not to me.
You have my word.
Maria's just gonna nod, this is Catherine's decision.
And I want a party.
Of course you do.
Uh, death's party.
Sure.
And I'm not going to call you dad.
I wouldn't ask you to.
That'd be a little fucking weird, wouldn't it?
Well, that's sort of how the family operates, you all know that.
Oh yeah, semantics.
You'll always be my cousin. And with open doors and outside of the coterie and our bloodline. Uncle will suffice, or just call me by name. I don't care. I care about our future. If we even fucking have one.
So, why were you lying? You're lying, killing her will change things. But not in what, the ways that you were saying it.
It'll just start over again. And that's another, who knows how long it'll take me to find her again.
Why find her again?
We're, it's a cycle, it's reincarnation, it's a loop, it never stops.
I'll just stake, we could just stake you down, and then you don't find each other and that'll break it.
Maria, help me out here.
It's not as simple as that, Catherine, but it's too long of a story to say-
I think you just need some fresh blood in the family and we'll figure it out, me and Bella.
Who knows, you might able, you might be able to find the answer, but I'll tell you everything that's going on.
Fine.
Fine.
There's still time, Edgar, to change your mind, and ask Tegan. No one's taking that off the table.
No.
No one but you, the only one keeping it there is your stubborn ass.
It's the right choice, and I hope you see that one day.
Come on, Maria.
Maria is, honestly, she's just gonna nod, she's really not in the mood to speak right now, um. Edgar, if you look, you can tell that she's softened a bit at your words. Um, but she's still upset at the bite. Uh, she's gonna grab the, the knife, uh, that fell, uh, after, yeah, that cluttered. And, uh, put it back in its sheath, and also sheaved the second knife that she had out, uh, uh, just in case.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and she's just gonna start walking back in with Catherine.
Aelyn is wiping away the blood on your mouth. Edgar, you alright? Why did you bite her?
I need to pray.
You need to go to your church.
Take me to your church. I don't think mine's. I don't know. This doesn't feel like that.
There's a lot of fire in my church. A brazier that burns every day, all day, all night. To represent eternity.
Take me.
She takes your hand and leads you back to the car. And that is where we will end our very special session. Air in the mind for this evening, and we're so sorry that Az couldn't be with us, we missed, we missed Az.